Aye.
Councilor Garvin is not here yet. Uh, Councilor Geary. Councilor Stassen is not present yet. Uh, Councilor Peralta.
Aye.
Council President Minky.
Aye.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you Claudia. Uh, we've got two items on, uh, the agenda for our work session this evening. Uh, the first is a discussion on city facilities naming policy. And so I'll call on our Park and Recreation Director Susan Muir to introduce the topic for this, uh, discussion. So Susan, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Mayor, hi everybody. I am here tonight with a bit of a really early step in a process to create a new naming policy for the City of McIndel. We don't currently have one, um, but this came up as part of the strategic plan. And really when you look through our, uh, MacTown 2032, I think this topic tonight can really touch upon a number of our goals and objectives in there, including civic leadership and other things. Um, so it touches a number of those. And really the tone that you set with this can really have long lasting, um, impacts for how we set ourselves up for our community and what we say is important to us as a community. Um, so there's nothing proposed tonight. This is a true work session. I'm here sort of scoping and getting to some initial feedback from you all. What I'll do then is take your feedback and draft an ordinance, um, with maybe some options in there and bring that back to you for consideration. So I crafted a number of questions in the staff report that I pulled from a number of other examples of naming ordinances. And if you all are ready, I think we can just roll through these and you can give me your feedback on it. Let me know what you would prefer to see in the policy when it comes back. I've broken it down into a few categories so we can kind of go through some and then I'll get the feedback and then we can go through the next round of them. That sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So I think, I think I know the answer to the first one is do we want a naming policy? It is in your strategic plan, so I think I'm seeing head nods. And if you're okay with this, I'll just take those head nods. I think I can see almost all of the councilors. Some of you have your camera off, so, um, I can either, you can interject if you don't agree, um, but I'll just take head nods and thumbs up. Okay, so yes on a naming policy. Uh, should we make that naming, uh, process subject to a public comment process where you all can get feedback on the proposed name? Some thumbs up there.
I don't think necessarily, but I'm okay with it.
We could also make it optional where you all could decide based on what the naming is, whether or not you wanted to do public, public feedback? I could draft it that way. I like the optional.
I think in general, public feedback is a good thing. There's any reason not to.
Like I say, I, I'm good either way. I, my concern is making this a drawn out thing. I don't want to require, I mean, I remember that there was quite a deal with naming Discovery Meadows, whereas a number of other things recently, within the last five years have been just a couple of three people decided, yeah, let's name it that and they went with it. So I, that's why I kind of feel like there should be some rules around.
Okay. So I think, I think I'm hearing, yes, let's do that, but let's make sure it doesn't drag on and become, uh, too much of an ordeal so we can make it a clear process. Um, do you want this to apply to pretty much anything other than streets which are included in the subdivision plating process? So I listed there buildings, parks, natural areas, bridges, or other city-owned structures. Want this to be pretty encompassing whenever you're naming something to have this naming policy be, um, the overarching guidelines?
The only comment that I have on that is that I would encourage you to include the renaming of streets in that, in the category. So it's not maybe the initial name, but oftentimes streets are renamed. I'm thinking, I'm okay in Boulevard in Portland or other kinds of streets like that, so.
Okay.
That wouldn't be included in the plating process, so having something that's flexible enough to include that maybe makes some sense.
And what I can do is check and see if that original naming policy already has a renaming policy in it and if not, um, work with that. So good, good option.
I, I have a question here. Obviously, uh, we're not going to name everything. I mean, if every building we put up has to have a name, I, I think we're in trouble. Um, so is there some way we can delineate this or just if it, if everybody feels strongly about it?
So this would apply to city-owned buildings, um, and I think only those that we are planning on not selling or using for another use. So, um, you know, um, and parks as well. I don't know that there are too many things that would fall under this category, but we could, um, we could test that. I'm hearing you say, we don't want to go overboard in terms of naming every room and every staircase and every doorway or everything.
Even the building, I mean, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, the community center, like, do we need to name that? Beyond that particular?
Well, oftentimes the reason to name a building is because someone makes a generous contribution to the development of the building. So I would think that the policy should be flexible enough to account for that possibility also.
Absolutely, but that hasn't been our history in the past. And quite frankly, in the past, we've had a lot of people that gave 20 years plus to this city and I can understand the purpose in naming things after them, but you know, there should be some thought given on that.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I've noticed is that several jurisdictions will allow someone to apply to rename something or to name something. And so it's a bit of an application process. I don't know that that applies as much here, um, as it would in other areas, but I did see that in some of the other ordinances.
Can I ask a question, uh, not directly to your question? Uh, about implementing a policy like this, how much staff time is that going to take right now, do you think?
Um, to draft an ordinance? Well, uh, you know, there was a little bit of research time to get this ready for you tonight, um, and draft the staff report. And then to draft an ordinance, it would probably take a little bit, uh, you know, I would guess eight to 16 hours to draft an ordinance. And then Walt, obviously, I want to loop him in so he could review it. Um, and then I would also loop in the planning department and community development director as well, so that they can make sure that it doesn't conflict with anything in those codes. And then, and the time that you all would have it when it comes back to you?
It feels to me like something like a naming policy at a time when we know we're going to have budget shortfalls isn't something that we necessarily want to be investing in. Of course, we need to be planning for our future. Uh, and so I, I feel like the, the number of people that would be involved in drafting a policy that, that this might be something where you could take the work that's already done and set it aside and perhaps revisit next year when we have a little bit better idea of what we're going to be facing.
So the, and this may be something that Jeff wants to weigh in as well. This is actually spelled out in your strategic plan to do this work. And I know we, um, we were talking a lot lately about staying focused and making progress on the strategic plan. And so, um, I think that's a conversation for you all. I don't know if Jeff wants to weigh in on that. I hear what you're saying and I also think that this actually has a lot of value as somebody that thinks about what, what are, what are we defining ourselves as a community in terms of naming things? So I think that's why it ended up in the strategic plan.
Yeah, I, and I'm not saying it doesn't have value. Please don't interpret my remarks in that way. Um, I'm only thinking about the workload that could be falling on Parks and Rec, um, in terms of reopening, figuring out youth sports, um, you know, that there's potential for a lot more staff needs, um, that, that, that I'm really just thinking about your, um, staff's capacity and wondering if we want to pursue that at this time, not because I don't see that it has value.
I think that begs, that begs the question Susan. Do you feel like this is going to be a big imposition on your staff time? Cause I kind of agree with Remy that it's not necessarily a, a pressing issue during this particular time. But on the other hand, if it's not a huge imposition on your staff, um, knocking this out before we go through a lot of the building, uh, investments that are going to happen in the next few years might make sense.
And Jeff has his hand up.
So I, I appreciate the, the comments. The, the reality is that most of the work that you've seen tonight has been done for a while and it's been pushed out several times based on other priorities. So it hasn't been a drop everything and do it now. We've really just been waiting to plug it into a time, uh, when the council has some availability to, to spend some policy thinking about it. I think the, the lion's share of the work happens if and when we are faced with naming opportunities and less about putting the, sort of the code in place and the process in place. Um, I think it feels like something we can knock out in a relatively short period of time. If, if ideas or requests for naming start to become burdensome or getting in the way of some of the other issues that you've already raised, there's nothing in this policy that obligates the city to pursue naming opportunities. We can prioritize that with other work.
Answer. I'm sorry Kelly.
It takes years to name something, you know, depending on the amount of capacity we have.
So, go ahead Sol.
No, I'm sorry, please Wendy.
I had, I just had a question about the, uh, when it comes to the time for naming, uh, will this reduce our, uh, to Jeff's point, will this reduce our workload for naming because we already have this established policy and make us more efficient at that point? Is that one of the expected outcomes?
Yes.
Like whereas before we were trying to figure out, okay, how do you go around naming this if we just have a really clear process that hopefully is designed to be efficient in how we implement it?
Yes, uh, and I, I can tell you as somebody who has brought forward a name of a, of a park to you all, um, it would have been really handy to have something to go to as guidance for that. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I volunteered actually to do this work when you wrote the strategic plan, because it would have been really helpful to know what are the values we're trying to reflect in our naming. Now that one actually had some conversation that I didn't know about before I even arrived here, so that quickly I caught up with that piece of it. But, um, I, I, as somebody that has seen things named and even renamed in some communities, I, I, I want to tell you, I think this does actually, this is really important leadership work that does reflect the values of our community. And, um, it would, it would have been helpful for me to see something like this in our books coming here. I don't, I don't, I'm not dram, I don't want to, uh, overstate what we're doing here. This is a pretty simple agenda item and I think if we, we can kick through it, it should be pretty simple and the ordinance hopefully will be pretty quick, um, to bring back to you, but it, it will be helpful when we are naming things.
So. I would like to just go through it then and, and go through your plan Susan tonight and, and, uh, get it, you know, get this knocked out. Then it sounds like it's not a huge imposition on your staff, so rather than bringing this back.
From my perspective, what I've heard is that, you know, if we're 10 hours away from coming up with a, a policy that has been worked on for a while now, and I'm guessing as you were starting to work on the Jay Pearson Park, you know, there's some legwork that was done there. I, I feel that let's get through it and if it takes you a month because things get in the way, that's fine. I think the, the bigger lift is going to be, uh, when we find opportunities to name that we have something to guide us. Uh, cause I know, you know, a number of times that's come to us when we have change in leadership and those types of things.
Okay. Uh, the first section two is also probably the one that we should go the fastest through. So I know, I appreciate that this is moving a little slow, but, um, I'm just going to assume that you all being the naming body for, um, these things is the appropriate decision-making body for that. Um, and then the renaming piece two, which Council Peralta, um, brought up is not related to streets, but if any facilities need to be renamed, I think this is something we see in the headlines all the time, that things change and we learn about history and we think about renaming things. So, um, I'm seeing some head nods, we should include that as well, an opportunity to rename. Okay. And, and I'll be honest with you, I think number seven is one of the most important questions for you all to give direction on here. Um, and again, this is just something that would be a new filter for us to look at. Um, and I teed this naming criteria up to say, do you want us to encourage, allow, or prohibit these kinds of things? Um, and one of those values is do we want to look at names that reflect the city's ethnic and cultural diversity?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then how about naming after people? Anybody have strong feelings about that? Uh, do we want to make sure?
Both of the ones that they talked about that you, they had to have at least, if they were an employee, they had to have at least served or, or an official, they had to have at least served over 10 years. I think that's important. I don't know, there was kind of an emphasis on them being deceased on a couple of those suggestions, so I don't know on that.
Yeah.
Yes, and I've seen that, I saw that a lot actually, where things wouldn't be named after somebody until after they had passed away. Is that important to any of you?
Not at all.
Okay.
No, we wouldn't have the Jay Pearson Park.
Yeah. I like, I, I.
Or the Formley or the Kent Taylor or some of the other.
I actually like having them be able to know that, how much they were appreciated while they're living. Uh, but I do like the 10 years and I like, uh, I like, um, after they've finished with their service so that it's a kind of a celebration of what they contributed, that chapter is closed.
And I also think that's important because if they're still in service, then that, they, there's an unfair.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I'd second that Remy. I don't want there to be public perceived by anybody.
So after they've completed their service and the service minimum of 10 years is what I heard from that. Sound good? Okay. Uh, any age, does anybody have any wanting to put anything about age in there? No, okay. Um, and then, you know, a lot of times they said elected official, elected official staff person or community leader, and there was another one that had, um, a little bit more of a hometown feel with a, just a community, not just, but a city resident that somebody made application for a particular individual, which must leave that open as well. Okay? Okay?
What about, what about, um, you know, like national leaders? Uh, could that, does that fall into the community leader category?
I think there might be one, yes. Um, so, uh, number 11 is names that reflect national, state, or local historical or cultural events, so it could be covered under that as well. But I'll make sure that we get the national perspective in there somewhere. Okay, and then this is a big policy question. Do you want, this is what I call the pay to play. Would you like people to be able to, um, put their name on a building and pay for that if they contribute a major, um, capital component to the construction of that facility?
I feel like that's covered under the, uh, honoring a member of the community, that if that was the way that they chose to contribute to their community, that it's covered. As opposed to being able to put, pay to put your name on a building. It's great if that's, if you can dedicate a bunch of money, but whether it's money or time, I don't like the idea of valuing one of those over the other.
Well, I think money or time, uh, is mentioned in several of them. It's a matter of have you put a huge amount of time into doing this or have you paid half of the cost of this?
Yeah, I, I do think it's probably important to delineate, um, but I agree with Remy that one shouldn't be preferred over the other and that, you know, but.
I agree.
In the future, it might not be clear, it'd be somewhat ambiguous what community service means. It might not mean making a big donation, so I'd as well just make it clear for people.
So I think what you're saying is if they make a contribution, it should be the, the naming portion of that, portion of that should be tied to the fact that they're also a leader in the community. And, and mostly because, could be because they made.
Fairly on that.
Fairly.
You can still make a huge contribution to the community without necessarily being
Yeah. I mean, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of, not that we have any sports stadiums, for example, but you know, um, I, I remember when football stadiums in towns that I've lived in have been renamed after corporate names and they haven't necessarily had a huge connection to the community, I felt, so.
Right, and look for a specific time period usually though.
That's right.
They'll buy, they'll buy the naming rights for 10 years and.
I think what I'm saying is that I would like under the, the, the point one up, that contribution to the community, that if somebody makes a large financial contribution and the community wants to honor them, that, that was the contribution as, that, that makes sense under that category, but you, but delineate from being able to.
You don't want to fall out like a certain percentage, that if they paid 50%, they get their name on a building.
Right, thank you Adam.
Okay, and so.
Makes sense to me.
What it sounds like is if there's a donation made, then that could be, somebody decides to honor that with naming it after that person, but we're not going to say, if you donate a half a million dollars to this facility, you would get the right to name the west wing of it or something. That's not like a good place to start? And no, no contribution amounts related to that, that it would come through that community pride thing that Council Dragan was speaking about. Okay? Um, I think that actually covers the next couple of them, um, which would also be like if somebody's giving land for a park, that would be, we wouldn't see necessarily the contribution as the right to name it, but because they're a community leader and contributed the property, they would be can, something that we could consider naming it after them.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay. Um, any, do you want to restrict naming it after a business in any way? That has to be, um, not a business?
No, I don't think so. I think we've had a history of good public-private partnerships and I think we should leave that door open.
I, I would argue the opposite. I, I would like to keep it as an individual basis and keep corporations' names off our, uh, people, people are kind of forever and despite maybe later their reputation tarnished, which is a whole nother segment, segment. I don't know if corporations have that same lasting ability or have the same importance that we want to dedicate our public places to commercial endeavors. And that's, that's what I think.
I would agree with Zach, just in that I wouldn't want it to become a marketing thing to, for a business, right? And so not saying that we can't have those public-private partnerships, I think that's great, but I, and I really think that's important, but I feel like a business makes decisions in really different ways than an individual does. And I just wouldn't want to see somebody trying to buy up lands to, you know, own half of the, have their names on half the buildings or whatever, you know, who knows? So that would be my concern, is that it would go a different direction that we wouldn't want it to go in.
I, not having those types of pay-to-play, uh, options in there, is there anything that would make us think that we would get less land contributions or contributions in general?
I don't think so. Um, I think if somebody wanted to make a stipulation with that, it could be part of the land deal. Um, but I don't, I don't think that would reduce this. Um, most of the donations are so philanthropic and, you know, do, people are doing it, um, for community-minded reasons that I don't think they anticipate that or even would, would hope that that would happen. So, um, I do think that naming something after a business is for a little bit bigger venue typically, something where there is a drive-by factor and people can see the signs and stuff, so I don't know that.
Like the Moda Center.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, that type of thing. So whether or not we think that we'd want something like that in our community.
But a, a lot of those buildings are not, uh, public, they're private and they have specific contracts for naming rights for a specific time period.
So Councilor Garvin, anything else you want to say on that? It sounds like you might be the one person that is interested in naming it after a business.
Not really interested in naming it after a business, I just want to leave the door open, that we didn't exclude private money from an already strapped budget when we're trying to make capital endeavors for, you know, facilities in the next decade or two.
I, uh, I kind of agree with Adam there. Sorry Zach, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, I was just going to jump in with a sweet Taco Bell pool joke, but I'm going to back off.
Well, I mean, you know, not like this would happen and we should have such problems, but I mean, if you can imagine a company like Nike investing in a recreational facility, I mean, this is pretty unlikely, but I just think that, you know.
What if we do for certain size projects? Cause all the projects we're talking about are the larger, I mean, a business probably wouldn't put their name on a smaller project.
I wonder if maybe we're overthinking this, because it probably isn't going to happen that often?
Yeah.
I would just say, in my view, in line with Adam, is I think we should leave the door open to it and in general, it's not something that I'm in favor of, so.
Something like Zach suggesting with a 10-year naming ability, I, I don't think that's a bad thing.
Yeah.
Got it.
And if we have a lot of people wanting to give us a lot of money for buildings, it would be a nice problem to have, because they want to put their names on them.
Then we can split it out so they'll each get a room they can name.
Right, there you go.
A lease that they can name. Um, okay, so I think we've already answered 11, names that reflect national, state, or local, historical, or cultural events. I think that's a, um, one that we already talked about. Native wildlife and nature, this, this kind of came up in the Discovery Meadows piece of it, keeping that as an option in there. Um, geographic, uh, location, you know, for a long time, we called the Jay Pearson Park the Northwest Community Park, um, and some people still call it that, but, um, okay with keeping geographic location in there. Um, any, this one sort of relates to business, but might be more like Alpine District, um, names to commemorate economic development or redevelopment activity and fulfillment of the city's mission. Leave that in as well.
Yeah, like the north, the northeast gateway area, that was a geographic designation.
Yep. Um, any, do you want to have any language in there that can define some sort of concept? And there was, uh, one, I'm not sure I put the example in here, that talked about furthering the city's mission with certain terms that reflect the city's, um, vision, like friendship and independence and that kind of thing. Anybody have strong feelings about including or not including those kinds of guidance?
I think maybe leave the door open. I don't know that that's a driving factor, but.
Okay. All right, um, you have done what I needed to do in order to go back and craft the, um, the ordinance. Hopefully that wasn't too painful. I do, um, well, I, I do want to go back and address the fact that yes, we, I do, we all have a lot on our plates, but we're also all focused on the strategic plan and trying to make sure that we're making progress on that as well. So, um, thank you for checking in with me on that as we move through this. It has been being kicked around for quite a while, so, uh, we, I, I'm also hearing you say it's not a priority, um, and doesn't feel urgent, but we'll keep working on it and bring it back when, when we can. So thank you for that.
One point for a scorecard.
Yeah.
Thank you Susan.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next discussion this evening, which is, uh, council dynamics and implementing our strategic plan, or what we've called Level 10. And so going back to that point, uh, you know, in the strategic plan that Susan made mention to, so I'll call on, uh, City Manager Jeff Talleri to introduce the topic and then Wendy's going to go over slides that she's prepared for us as it relates to Level 10. So Jeff?
Thank you Mayor, you did a great job of introducing it actually, so I think at this point, I'll just turn it over to Wendy and, uh, let her roll with it. Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and I, uh, we sent this out to you guys, um, shortly before the meeting, in case you wanted to, uh, follow along with us as we go through this. Um, so basically what we wanted to do is we wanted to circle back, uh, to talk a little bit about, oh, gosh, come on, please. Steve, fill this and start over. Um, so we wanted to circle back and talk a little bit about how we're using the Level 10 meeting. Um, Scott, Kelly and I have been talking about, uh, with the, what we've learned in our practice, our trial runs, what we've done so far. Um, we have some takeaways that we think can be really, uh, make the Level 10 meeting a more effective tool for us. So this is a proposed strategy for moving forward with the Level 10 meeting in a restructured way. Uh, and, and to introduce the topic, I'm going to talk about the broad picture first and then I'm going to talk about where the Level 10 fits into that, um, so that you guys can comment on that level of thinking as well and see where the Level 10 fits in with that, the level of thinking, the broader perspective of what we're trying to do. So the, um, topic of this is the City Council Dynamics and implementing our strategic plan, because that's really what we're trying to do is make ourselves, uh, using the Level 10 to produce a culture and system of excellence and governance. So that's reminding us of what we're talking about here. And the outcomes that we're trying to achieve, we're trying to focus our deliberations, work and decisions in a way that effectively advances our strategic plan and our annual goals that are established from the strategic plan. We're working on creating a high-functioning team that solves problems effectively with high topic tension and low interpersonal tension. Uh, we're trying, we're working on the skills to make sound and effective, uh, to have sound and effective problem solving for complex. and effective problem-solving for complex problems with whoever's in these seats in the future. That will be something that we want this group to be able to do, because we have to solve problems that are complex. It's, it's, a goal is to have accountability for actions to move towards solutions, providing unified leadership for the city manager and for the city that also takes into account the diverse views of council members, so that our leadership isn't fractured, but we're cohesive, but also able to benefit from the different viewpoints of the city councillors, and then provide a structure that enables for consistent, superior governance, even with changing council members. So, this is a nod towards the fact that we, the nature of this position is that we can have turnover that's out of our control, and that's fine, that's a part of what keeps this governance, the design of this governance, but we want, even with that turnover, to have superior governance for the city of McMenville. So, those are our purposes for even talking about this. So, looking at the bigger picture of it, the model that we're using is an organizational model called traction. It's the Entrepreneurial Operating System model, and it's basically a structured way to work on the effectiveness of any organization. And really, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to build the machine to produce excellence in governance. So, we're trying to make it to where all aspects of this machine are working effectively together to enable it to now and into the future, even with those changing seats, the changing people in the seats, it's still going to function to produce that excellence and governance that we have benefited from in McMenville for a long time. And so, this is a visual image of what the EOS model, it provides six key components of any organization that need to be managed and strengthened to make it effective. And this model applies to big and small organizations alike, and those six components that we're going to talk about in more detail are the people component, getting the right people in the right seat, the vision, the data, the process, the traction component, and the issues component. So, we're going to talk a little bit more about each one of those, so you guys understand it. And you guys can stop me if you have any questions. I can't see anyone, because I'm just looking at the slides, but if, if you want to interrupt me, I'm, I welcome any questions that you have along the way, and I'll let you guys ask questions afterwards as well, of course. So, the vision component, there, Peter Sengay said, you cannot have a learning organization without a shared vision. A shared vision provides a compass to keep learning on course when stress develops. And so, this component is about strengthening the vision, the shared vision, that enables everybody to be on the same page as you work through the trials and tribulations of what we're trying to do. This would be for us, the strategic plan and our shared values that we came up with would be two of the organizing documents, and then the goals that we set out of that strategic plan, those would be part of that vision component, but it's a way for us to make sure that that vision component becomes a part of the organizational structure of how we do things. And so, there's certain things you can do to strengthen that component of the operating system. There's the people component. Jim Collins is famous for saying, first put the right people in the right seats, great vision without great people is irrelevant. And as we, we probably have all heard in our private industry, that that's one of the most critical things, first you get the right people in the right seats, and then you, then you figure out where you're driving the bus. So, it's, this component talks about how you could go about doing that. We'd have special circumstances or special ways of approaching that, since we're not choosing who goes in those seats, but there's still things we can do to support having the right balance of people with the right, with a background that does a good job of representing what needs to be represented to make great decisions for the city. The data component is about, around scorecards and measurables, and Paul R. Nevin said, you may create an inspirational and visually resplendent strategy map, but without accountability, its value is specious. And basically, this is the accountability part, where you take out the feelings, personalities, and opinions, and egos, and you dial in on what numbers will show us, leading-edge indicators of whether or not we're on the right track, to give us very, very good empirical data so that we can respond to any, any indications that we're going off-track in a proactive manner. So, that's what that component is about. And then, you guys are pretty darn familiar with the issues component. This is what we started working on in the Level 10. It's a central part of the IDS, is about being able to identify, having an organizational habit where you, not only do you acknowledge that there are issues, but you actually ferret out the issues that you have as an organization, and then you put it through a process, a very focused, laser-like focused process, to be able to identify the root cause of the problem, discuss, and come up with solutions, and then have a process for seeing if those solutions are working, and bringing it back until it's absolutely not an issue anymore. And so, that's the issues component of it. And then, for the process component of it, this is Keith Cunningham said, ordinary things consistently done produce extraordinary results, and that, that's all about process discipline, right? So, if we are systematizing how the city council does its work, then we're establishing processes that work, that create effective outcomes, that enable us to be more and more effective, and to see what works and what doesn't work, and make tweaks. And so, this process component is all about seeing what processes, what processes are needed for a city council to be effective, and having some in place that we can then tweak moving forward. So, that's the process component. And then, the traction component is about bringing discipline and accountability into the organization and becoming great execution. It's how you get, take the vision from just an idea to actual, actually in the organizational structure and habits of the organization. And that is a critical piece that brings a lot of the other ones together. Oops, let me see, in the back. Now, I'm going over, hold on a second here. Let me go back to the... All right. I'm going to start from this slide. Remind me not to press on that. Okay, so, the first, so, that's just an overview of kind of the structure that the Level 10 is a part of. I don't know how much of it we will necessarily decide to use, but the Level 10 tool will take us into some of the other ideas, and possibly we'll use some of those other tools if we see that it's needed or something that we would like to address. But the Level 10, the newly-defined Level 10 process is to enable us to more effectively use that tool to address trying to create this machine that's really effective and functions very well. And so, the, the new process that I'd like to propose is one where we choose a different approach to creating the master issues list. Instead of having us create it the way we have been creating it, I'd like to suggest that we have a council and executive team, one-on-one interviews, and this is something we've done at Winsome as well, where if there's a particularly complicated problem that we're trying to find the root cause of, you do interviews of the people who have touched that problem, and they, then you see the common threads that are coming up. So, the council and executive team interviews would be one-on-one interviews where a neutral third party, we were talking about, talking to Eric Jensen about doing these, would ask certain questions to elicit feedback about how the city council functions, and that, those interviews would produce a master issues list that would become the master issues list for the Level 10 meeting. The interview results, that's the number two, will become the master issues list, and then we'd implement a monthly Level 10 to, we would do the same voting that we did before, where we would vote on that master issues list that was created out of those interviews, and then it would give us an opportunity to identify, discuss, and solve the issues that we had chosen to address in the Level 10 meeting. And potentially, we could repeat that process quarterly, so it becomes an organizational habit for us and city councillors in the future, to enable the city council to really be working on how they're functioning as a group and, and being held accountable for being a high-performing organization. So, I already talked about this a little bit, the collecting data part, interview one-on-one with the, each individual counselor and the executive team to get high-quality data. The interview questions that we've suggested at this point is kind of like a SWOT, where we would be asking about the council's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, share a vision of what we think an optimally functioning city council looks like, and how do we know if we're successful? And that can be the beginnings of forming some kind of a scorecard, so that we can be tracking and be holding ourselves accountable in the future. And then, formulating the issues list, the results can be, you see the threads, the common threads of topics that are coming up, and it can be formulated into a master issues list that the city council can use in their Level 10 meeting. And then, the Level 10 meetings themselves, we can go through this quickly, because we've all been through them, we vote on the newly-formulated master issues list for each Level 10 meeting, so we decide which ones we talk about and in what order. We identify, so this will give us the opportunity to strengthen our ability to identify root causes of the issues, and we don't move on until we feel confident that we've gotten to the root issue that we're trying to address. And then, we discuss, which gives us an opportunity to practice functioning as a high-performing, a high-functioning team with high-topic tension, low interpersonal tension, and it enables us to build trust, respect, and open, honest communication to get to the, the next step, which is the solve. And so, in the solving process, we're practicing coming to consensus around innovative solutions and holding ourselves accountable, accountable for taking actions and producing results. And so, really, what the, the Level 10 meeting does, if we, if we approach it this way, is it gives us an opportunity to work on actually a number of different elements of this model. We would be include, including vision, data, issues, traction, and process in one tool that if we find value in it, we can decide, like, for example, sometimes what happens is in your, your solutions, you find that a weakness is addressed by another one of the tools, and we decide we want to work on that, and there are specific actions we want to take in order to work on that, that fall under one of the other categories. So, it's really just the beginning of exploring, putting together the structure for the city council. And then, what I, from what I've seen, the Level 10 meeting, if it's done effectively, it creates, it's a pretty powerful tool for creating positive organizational change. So, it would be exploring what that could look like for the city council. And so, this is the last slide, so just for any questions you guys have, and the last quote I chose was, "If it doesn't get easier, we get better." And in my opinion, I think that this is a good tool for us to use, for us to work on continuous improvement and getting better, so that we can better serve the city even in difficult times. So, I'm going to open, maybe I'll stop Cher and see if you guys have any questions, so I can see your faces.
Hey, thank you, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy off of this presentation?
I don't have questions. I will say that the, the interviews with Jensen and then coming together is very reminiscent of how we used to do strategic planning with Sue...
Disciple.
Sue Disciple, yeah. Thank you, she was great. And that was very effective.
I think from my perspective, the thing that really excites me is to be able to vet a master list that not only council, but the executive team is looking at, because we look at capacity that way, but then it comes back down to accountability and a scorecard, where we have reporting back on a, on a consistent basis. I think we've missed that, and then we've got too many things on the plate. And so, that scorecard and that accountability, for me, is going to be the thing, I think, that brings us, the dynamics closer together, and we know exactly where we're going, and we have a timeline possibly, and an end result. Other questions, comments?
No, Wendy, I really appreciate your work on this and the vision that you have for putting together an accountable method for us to use, and I feel comfortable following your leadership on this, for sure.
I think so.
I do like the idea of going, going to this, that gets closer to what we did with Susan, which was the first year I was on council, I really liked it. My only issue or concern, I guess, would be if it gets us bogged down, or we're getting more reactive than proactive in solving things, because when we first started Level 10, it kind of seemed like we were going to be able to catch things as they were coming at us and see if they really evolved into an issue where going to this model, seems like it could slow us down quite a bit.
You know, as Kelly and Wendy and I have talked, I think one of the aspects, Adam, that's going to help is, as we have this master list and we're looking at it from a number of perspectives, the executive group and the council, we've got to remember that it's got to be within that strategic plan. And so, I don't think there's going to be a lot of things that are coming in from sideways. You know, the analogy that I used at the beginning of the strategic plan is to make sure that we bowl within our lanes, and we don't jump the ball over three lanes and hit the pins down and think that's a win. It's the lane that we're in, and that lane is the strategic plan. Any, any other thoughts on that, Wendy?
Yeah, I think that's a great comment. That was actually one of the things that made me start thinking about a different way to structure this, the Level 10 meeting. And one of the things I feel like this is going to do is it makes the Level 10 about making us, so it's working on our organization, like on the city council, so we're more effective when we go to the dais. And, and specifically around, say, for example, we are getting bogged down, and that's one of the issues that comes up as one of our issues, then we IDS it, and we come up with solutions for those things. It's a way to bring up exactly what you're talking about, where things that are making us less effective than we'd like to be, we're discussing them actively and solving them, and there's a way for us to have balanced information coming in on a regular basis, so we don't get too far off the beam with a major issue with how we're approaching our business, without addressing it in a really proactive way. So, I, so, we definitely should revisit that as we try it out, Adam. I agree, that is a problem when that starts to happen. My suspicion is that it will actually help with that instead of hurt that, but let's keep an eye on it as we try it, because it's different for different groups, right? And this is a really different group to try this tool with, because it's often used in the private sector, so it'll be different for a city council to use it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we've had a lot of talking about that Wendy, in their company, has had great success, but it's different when you have employees as compared to an elected body or a volunteer body. And, and so, we feel that, well, Wendy, with her expertise in this, is really trying to deliver this to an elected or volunteer organization, and we're pretty excited about that. The other piece that I would just like to do is, you know, this is the result of, it's been almost a year and a half, two years, when we met with Eric, and we had our, well, 2019 retreat summary, and I think we're going to be able to pick up with that with the interviews that Eric are going to do. But I truly would ask the question, and some of you've answered that, do you feel comfortable in having that opportunity to talk to Eric, which becomes a springboard for us moving forward? Anyone, any one of the council have a concern with that? And I think we're going to be able to pick up with that with the interviews that Eric are going to do. But I truly would ask the question, and some of you've answered that, do you feel comfortable in having that opportunity to talk to Eric, which becomes a springboard for us moving forward? Anyone, any one of the council have a concern with that? Okay, I, we had assignments within this group to make sure that we all, we've all felt comfortable with that. So I think we've answered the question, Wendy and Kelly, that the group is excited to have that opportunity to meet with Eric and then we've got a number of members of our executive committee on, or employees on the line and they're going to be a part of that also. Any other comments, any other questions? Well, hearing none, then I won't belabor our work session this evening. Wendy, thank you so very much and putting those slides together, it looks like you have a PR group working behind you to bring that to us and again, being able to have that and refer back to that. So we've got about eight minutes to get up and stretch and so I'll go ahead and I'll go back to Jeff and just ask any other comments that you might have, Jeff, in closing this discussion.
No, thank you. I'll work with Eric and we'll start to get things scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I'll go ahead and adjourn our work session this evening and we'll be back at seven o'clock for our regularly scheduled council meeting. And Claudia, we stay on this line for the council meeting?
Correct. It's the same Zoom link for it, so you guys can either stay on and just mute your cameras and audio.
Okay, so we've, we've got seven minutes now to stretch.